Okay, it is 7:30 PM on a Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. Call was been to order for the invocation. Madam Manager.
Thank you. Good evening. Let's bow our heads and stand and pray for the leadership of the city of West Miami, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the commission members and their families. We pray for all those in our audience this evening and for their families as well. We recognize and pray and ask you to bless our law enforcement officers and firefighters and their families so that they can safely return home to their families. We ask for peace in Ukraine and we actually pray for world peace in general. And we ask this in your name, God. Amen.
For the pledge of allegiance, please place a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Yes, item three, we'll call Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for March 16th, 2022, regular commission meeting.
Have a motion? No, no, I'm not motioning. Do you have a motion? Commissioner Blanca, you motioned?
Second.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
No one has made a motion.
I guess I did, yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Blanca, second by Commissioner Blanes.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, public comments. I know we have a few that I think will take up at this point. People here for public comments. If you are a candidate for judge, this is your opportunity as well. So please, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you. And congratulations to the new mayor of the city, Eric Diaz-Padrón, to Vice Mayor Juan Blanes, and to Candy de Blanca, Commissioner, and to Commissioner Luciano Suarez. And I am running for Circuit Court Judge of Miami. My address is...
Yes, please.
And I am running a countywide race. The election is August 23rd, and it's Circuit Court. I am currently practicing as a family law attorney, not far from here on Coral Way and 67th. And I've had my law firm for about five years. Before then, I worked for the State Attorney's Office as an Assistant State Attorney in the Child Support Division. And for about nine years, I did that. And then before then, I worked for the Legal Aid Society in the Civil Division. So I've been practicing for about 16 years. I am the mother of two teenagers, a girl that's 13 and a boy that's 15. And I also am the president of the Dominican Bar Association. I was born in Puerto Rico, but my parents are Dominican. I was raised here in Miami. I moved here when I was five. And I've lived here, basically, with a short absence to go back to Dominican Republic. But I've lived here practically all my life and went to school in St. Thomas. I practically, you know, my 16 years of being an attorney, I've advocated for my clients, and that's what they paid me to do or what my government agency had me do. But I want to be able to serve the community now as a judge and hear a case and listen to both sides and objectively, following the rule of law, make a decision and do it with compassion, being humble, being fair, and continue to serve the community like I've done for 12 years. And I love my job. I love what I do. So, you know, you give me this opportunity, I can do that on August 23rd, and if you do early voting, on early voting as well. But, and just so that you know, I do serve in some volunteer organizations. I do pro bono for domestic violence victims through an organization called No More Tears, and also for Teen Court. That is a conjunction between the State Attorney's Office and the Public Defender's Office. I do that several times a month. So, thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay. Public comment is closed. Next item, report to the manager.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. And Mr. Attorney.
There's no report by the Attorney.
Making my life easy. Okay. And report to the City Engineer. There you go. How are you?
Always have something to report on. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The only items really today are the ongoing projects that we have under development right now. Since our last meeting, we did close up Phase 1A of the water project. So that project's complete, and we're moving forward now with plans for Phase 1B, which we expect to have completed this month and hopefully out to bid within the next month or two. And then we have a couple drainage projects that we're also completing design on, and we hope to go out to bid around the same time with those as well. So within the next couple months, you'll be seeing those packages ready for bid. That's all we got.
Thank you. Is there any questions on the table? No, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item nine, committee report. Report to the mayor.
I don't have a report. I did spot Mayor Rodriguez in the audience. I would like to welcome her back to the city and thank her for her service to the city. But I don't have a report this evening, and that, next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda item. Item 11A, second reading, this is a public hearing. An ordinance of the city of West Miami, Florida granting to Pivotal Utility Holdings, Inc., DVA Florida City Gas, its successors then assigned an exclusive gas franchise for a term of 30 years, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing for monthly payment of a franchise fee to the city, providing for adoption of representations, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing a separability clause, providing an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
We had an opportunity to review the entire document and made some changes with the city manager. At some point, we devoted quite a few hours on that.
Yes, we did.
And we fully recommend at this point the execution of the next contract.
Okay, this is a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I open the public hearing now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Public hearing is open. Anyone for public hearing? Do I call up the representatives for the contract now during the public hearing? Or do I close the public hearing?
Well, you close the public hearing and then call them up so you can make out your comments.
Public hearing is closed. Representatives from City Gas, please approach. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Monica Barnes, Legal Counsel of Florida City Gas, 700 Universe Boulevard, Juneau Beach, Florida. I'm here with my colleague, Miguel Bustos, and we are here to answer any questions, if you have any tonight.
I've read the agreement. I don't have any questions that haven't been answered by administration, but please have anyone on the table.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
The last contract, how many years?
They're 30-year contracts usually. This one has been expired for some months because of COVID. We were not able to meet at the beginning, and then we had several meetings involving the city attorney's input and legal review, and then we did some other research regarding the franchise agreement. So it's taken a while, but we're here this evening to recommend the agreement as presented. We have been working with Miguel Bustos and Monica Barnes, like I said, for the last at least eight months, if my memory serves me correct. It's a 6% utility tax that is collected by Pivotal, which is City Gas Company.
Well, actually, correction. It's a user fee that's collected.
User fee, I'm sorry. It's a user fee.
Utility tax in addition to that.
Which is standard in the industry. I did check around with other municipalities, and even though not everyone uses the same company, the user fee is consistent to what we are proposing, and this has been, it's the same amount that it's been in effect for many, many years.
Thank you. Mayor, let me tell you. I know this City Gas Company for many, many years. They has been always serious, reliable, and very good company for years. I've been in this town for 60, and in 60 years, I remember City Gas Company was the 27th Avenue of the office. I think it was many years ago, but I remember City Gas, very serious company.
Yeah, we've been serving the cities for 75 years.
Thank you.
No more questions.
Is there any other questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Any major changes that are significant to the contract?
No, sir. Actually, there's been some indemnity clauses, language that has been inserted in the contract pursuant to the recommendation of our city attorney that basically protects the city. God forbid if we were to have an accident. It basically puts a lot of the burden on the company. So we, Mr. Villalobos, spent quite some time revamping the indemnity clause, which was an area of concern for us.
If the Commission remembers, sometime back, we had an issue where one of the contractors that had a contract with the city of West Miami, Pierce, a Maine, and there was, we had to spend like 11 months trying to collect because the company had subcontracted the work to a subcontractor, and that subcontractor subcontracted to other people, which were bankrupt. And we finally were able to collect some 61...
$118,000.
$118,000.
In damages.
In damages.
So, Mr. Attorney, you're satisfied with all the changes and corrections to the contract?
As a matter of fact, yes. We inserted, we had personal interviews with counsel, and we inserted that language that will protect us. They agreed that the language that we had proposed and the manager and I had worked on were adequate, and they did insert that into the contract. Yes, sir. So we won't have that problem again. If there's an issue, the company will reimburse us, will hold us harmless with anything.
I have a motion by Commissioner Suarez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Vice Mayor Blanes. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the fun stuff. Next item, please.
Item 11B, this is a public hearing. Property address 5930 Southwest 9th Street, West Miami, Florida, 33144. Res zoning number 2021001. Applicants Renaissance Ballrooms, Inc., 6971 Southwest 79th Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33143. Ramiro Menendez, 474 Hunting Lot to Drive, Miami Springs, Florida, 33166. Applicant requests a zoning change for the property of 5930 Southwest 9th Street, West Miami, Florida, 33144. The property of 5930 Southwest 9th Street totals 6,300 square feet for the parcel. The total acreage for the R2 duplex is 0.14 acres. The parcel of land is within the duplex multifamily use corridor. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing house in the R2 duplex lot and rezon the property to R3 private park for the purpose of providing a private park for residents of the accompanying development and their pets. Zoning ordinance 282 Section 18.
All right, this is a public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Public hearing is now open. Guide me, Mr. Attorney, on the process here.
Yes.
Does the applicant present first, or...?
Well, I believe that once you open the public hearing, there's no position or there's no statement, you should close the public hearing and then call for the applicant to make a determination after you hear from the zoning board and the zoning director.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Mr. Villalobos, this is a zoning change, so there's two hearings on the zoning change.
That is correct, sir.
That means that tonight's hearing, there is no public speaking. It's just a formality to go to the second hearing.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. That is corrected.
You may close the public hearing and...
Let me make sure there's no comments in the public.
Correct.
Is anyone for public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Please proceed.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Wait, I'm maybe confused. The public hearing was up and closed for the application, and then we proceed with the ordinance, which requires the vote. So...
Correct, but...
Just for the public hearing, do you need motion and second and a vote?
Because it's a ordinance, it needs two hearings. So even though the other item may pass or not pass tonight, this item needs to be moved forward for a second hearing.
Yeah, but I'm also confused. I was listed here on the agenda.
Yes, I'm confused.
There's no, there's no... Item B.
Item B is the actual ordinance for the zoning change.
First reading.
It's labeled a public hearing as item number B.
Correct. All first readings are public hearings too.
No, they're not.
So the first reading requires to be like...
May I get a second?
I would go by what the city attorney, I'm kind of confused. Mr. Attorney, we have not read the ordinance yet.
Right.
This is intended to be a first reading, but it's labeled a public hearing.
Yes, that was an error in posting. It's supposed to be a first reading.
But it's a public hearing too, a first reading with public hearing.
Yes.
It's a first reading with public hearing, but it's a first reading. It's a first reading.
In public hearing, since it's a zoning change, so we should read the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And the agenda should be amended to reflect that.
Should we hear from the applicants? Just...
Again, there's no discussion on first reading. It's just move forward.
Okay, so would you like me to read the ordinance, Mr. Mayor? So...
The ordinance for...
The zoning change.
For the zoning change, yes, please.
Okay. Item C, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, amending Article 1, Section 3 of zoning ordinance 282 as amended by the adopted zoning map dated October 3, 207, and future zoning map attached herein as made part here too as Exhibit A, approving application for a change of zoning by Renaissance Ballroom, Inc., Renaissance Health Resort, West Miami, changing the zoning designation and classification for certain parcel of land located at 5930 Southwest 9th Street from R2 duplex family to R3 private parks, providing for compatibility and uniformity with the surrounding parcels and as adopted in the West Miami Comprehensive Development Plan dated December 7, 2016, providing for conflict correction, providing for separability, providing for transmitted, transmitted, and providing for effective date. So we have a motion by...
Well, let's redo this. Can I get a motion?
Yes, please.
On this rezoning for the park.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please call the rule.
Okay. Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
4-0, item passes. Should we proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item 11D, this is a public hearing. Property addresses 5920 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 33144. 5930 Southwest 9th Street, West Miami, Florida, 33144. Special use permit for plan development number 2021005. Applicants Renaissance Ballrooms, Inc., 6971 Southwest 79th Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33143. Ramiro Menendez, 474 Hunting Lot to Drive, Miami Springs, Florida, 33166. Applicant requests special use permit for plan development for the property of 5920 Southwest 8th Street and 5930 Southwest 9th Street, West Miami, Florida, 33144. The property of 5920 Southwest 8th Street totals 37,408 square feet on the front irregular parcel and 15,626 square feet in the rear parcel. The total acreage for the C parcel is .86 acres, and the total acreage of the R5 off-street parking for commercial parcel is .36, and the total acreage for the R2 duplex is .14 for a combined total of 1.364 acres. The parcels of land are within the mixed-use corridor. The applicant is requesting to build an eight-story building on the front parcel with an attached three-story, four-level parking garage on a portion of the rear parcel. The main building consists of 150 residential units with a total building square footage of 163,530. Zoning ordinance 282 Section 2B, 4.23, 4.3, 4.32, dash 4, ordinance 201401.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening. Again, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The property of 5920 Southwest 8th Street has an application for a special use plan for plan development. They attended the February 22nd meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board where they provided the information based on the plans that you have before you. It's actually 157 units. I don't know if she read.
Yes, 157 residential units.
And the board, after hearing from the public and from the developer, motioned to approve the, to forward the project to you with the recommendation of approval, 4-0. The, at that hearing, they also considered a variance that's within the realm of the Planning and Zoning Board, and they granted that variance for 15 feet from the parking garage to the house to the east of the parking garage. Where 25 is required, they granted it at 15 feet. We notified 500 radius feet. We published it in the Herald, and today they're here to present.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure that this procedurally is very, you know, technically accurate, so...
Yes, I was standing correctly. I was just reading the wrong page, and yes, you were following the correct procedure.
Okay, so at this point, do you open the public hearing?
Well, there's no discussion of the public hearing at this point. The public hearing will be at the next hearing.
No, that was for the rezoning of the, for the park. This is now for the special use permit.
For the special use permit, yes. You open for the public hearing.
All right. Public hearing is now open.
Good evening. James Williams with the Law Offices of Holland and Knight located at 701 Brickwell Avenue. I'm joined today by my colleague. Would you like me to make a presentation? I prepared a short presentation on the project. I don't know if you just would like to ask me questions or I could do the presentation.
No, please get the presentation.
Okay. So I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Mr. Hugo Arza. He's sitting there. He's helping me with the PowerPoint. I'm also joined by the applicant's representatives, Eileen Pinero, David Jimenez, and I'm joined by the architect, Pedro Ramos, who's sitting in the corner over there. He's the founder of the Architects Group. I'll just jump right in. Hugo, if you could hit next slide. So, and I apologize, you're going to have to shift a little bit to see the presentation. So the property is located south of Southwest 8th Street. It's bordered on the east by Silvania Boulevard. I've highlighted it in green on the aerial so you could see the property outline. Currently, it consists of four different parcels. Combined, that equals about 1.6 acres. The property itself is located about one block east of where we're currently sitting. You can actually see City Hall right there. Fun fact is, I actually grew up one block from here, so it's full circle. Next slide, please. So, as you know, there are two requests before you. We're proposing a state-of-the-art healthcare resort. In order to make that a reality, we have two requests that we've submitted. It's, the first one is a special use permit for a plan development, which is a standard application you get for most buildings of this size with these uses. The second application, which we've just discussed, well, we didn't discuss, was the rezoning application for a portion of the property, one of the four parcels. We're requesting to take it from R2 to R3 in order to provide a public park, and that parcel is located at 5930 Southwest 9th Street. Next slide. So I always like to start with the big picture. I think it's a lot easier when I show you the development instead of kind of giving you pieces and then we create something big. I like to go the reverse way. I think it's very helpful. I'm a visual learner, so I think it works. So what this is, is essentially a health resort, and what we label that as is under Miami-Dade County Code, Section 331532, it's considered a group residential facility. A group residential facility permits any uses such as extended care facility, ALF, congregate care facility, and support services of the like. In this facility specifically, we're looking at having an extended care facility with also a use of physical rehabilitation, but long-term physical rehabilitation. So for certain instances, if you were to break a hip and you needed long-term therapy, this would be an area you could go to. The property itself is going to consist of eight stories, and I know privacy is a huge aspect of it, so I'm going to make sure throughout this presentation, you're going to hear me echo privacy and consideration. But it'll be eight stories. It's approximately 157 beds. You have a three-story, four-level parking garage in the corner right here. You have a third-floor roof terrace that I've already pointed out on the PowerPoint. If you look at the bottom right slide, there's a rooftop terrace, which is a really nice feature to this project. And you have a private dog park and a private park in general, which I'll highlight right there. Next slide, please. I do also want to highlight that this project is not an age-restricted project. It's not going to be a 55-year and older project. And the reason behind that is, is that we don't want to limit it to 55 years and older. We want to limit it to anyone who needs the assistance, who could benefit from the extended care facility, to have the ability to come here, as we know housing is a very tough thing right now, and a lot of the senior demographic are looking to downsize, sell their homes, and have the care that they need for their daily tasks. So I wanted to go through the site plan with you. What I did is I basically labeled it, showing you where the building massing is, where the park is, and where the garage is on the top left. But I want to point out that if you look at the massing, the way we've developed this property, we pushed everything towards Southwest 8th Street. And that's a very important aspect of this project, right? Because with any well-planned development, you want it to be along the main commercial corridor. You don't want to have it close to the residential facilities, residential homes. You don't want it to the residential area. So what you did is we put the main building right up against Southwest 8th Street where all the activity is going to be occurring. Next slide, please. The second floor plan, I wanted to show you because that's the whole entire second floor that you see in red, that is administrative and support service offices. There's no livable units on the second floor. Next slide. So this is an eight-story building. I'm not going to take you through every floor, but I wanted to give you an idea of what the third floor and the rest of the floors are going to look like. The third floor is the last floor that doesn't have a building step back, and I'm going to explain what a building step back is in just a moment. But if you look at the shaded area in yellow here, that corner of the building overlooks the residential, right? That's the third floor. So at this height, you're not looking into anyone's backyards. But what we did is we didn't want to have a livable unit there with a patient inside and have a neighbor feel that someone's constantly watching them. So what we did is on this corner, we designed the inside to actually give more privacy to the neighbors across the street, because that is the only corner that actually looks directly across. Next slide, please. Before I go into more of the building, I did want it to walk you through what a typical configuration of the unit was going to look like. As you're going to notice, we have a studio styled unit and we have a one-bedroom styled unit. Both of the units, you'll recognize off the bat, neither of them have any kitchens. The kitchen, the reason for this is because we are going to provide caretakers that will either take the food directly to the unit, or we're going to have, we have a dining room on the first floor next to the lobby where they can also have their meals there. Next slide. So again, privacy and consideration echoed throughout this whole presentation. The whole design of this building was based off privacy for our residents, for our patients, but also for their surrounding neighborhood. When you look at the first, the first image on the top right here, you're going to see that all the way around this property, we have this very dense and lush landscaping that we're providing. I'll show you some of the trees that we're providing later on through the presentation so you can actually visually see it, but that is one way we decided to enhance the property. And as part of the rezoning application... And as part of the rezoning application, which we discussed at the next meeting, you'll see that private park actually gives you more buffer between the residential neighborhood and our project. So while we've minimized the structuring where we have everything going towards Southwest Eight Street, we've also provided this enhanced buffering by knocking down the existing structure that's there to create this nice park. So instead of looking at a empty, an empty parking lot, which is currently what you're seeing now when you, when you're, those residents that live here and here, instead of looking at a, an empty parking lot, they're now going to be looking at a beautiful lush green wall. The second consideration, and this is a really big design aspect, is the step back. And I had mentioned that a little earlier in my presentation. So you'll see right off the bat, it's a very unique design for this building. Now, designs like this really don't come up, come up on the market often. You don't really see it done often because privacy is not as important to where it affects the actual design of the building. But in this case, the developer and the applicant felt that privacy was essential. So what we did was, we have these step backs. And as I said, basically, the, the easiest way to describe it is as if I was standing at that window, if we were standing in the corner of that window and we wanted to see into the street down below or we wanted to see into a neighbor's yard because now you're at a height where you could potentially see in someone's backyard. What ends up happening is if you were to stand at that window and try to do that, all you're going to see is the roof above you. You're going to see that roof. It does not allow you to actually look down across to your neighbors. You can't see across the street. You can't see your neighbor's yard. You can't even see their front yard. All you see is a roof, but what it causes you to do is, and I, I pointed this out with the white arrows here, what it causes you to do is it looks out and over. So instead of being able to look down, you're not, you're not able to. You have to now look out and over and you can see the whole city of West Miami. It's still a beautiful view, but you've now created this level of privacy for your neighbors that they don't have to worry about someone's looking in their backyard. It's, it's an intrusive feeling and so when we're looking at a project, we look at it, how, how do we feel if this project was coming in to our neighborhood? How was, how would I feel if I lived across from it and privacy for the architect and the applicant was a, a huge consideration they needed to take into account? So that's why we did that step back feature. The third image on the right here, I, I highlighted it with the, with the arrows. So now you have living units on those, on those floors. What we did again, in order to protect the privacy of the neighbors, is everything is angled across. So these units, if they were to look out their windows, they're not able to look straight across to these neighbors. What it's forcing them to do is look all the way across the garage or the rooftop terrace here out over the city again. So that's another element of privacy. And like I said, and I pointed it out here, these three floors are administrative support offices and it's not high enough to where you can actually look into the backyard of any of your neighbors. These are in-and-out offices. You're not going to have someone living there. It's just an additional privacy aspect that we put in. Next slide, please. Again, this is just to, to really give you another visual of how we've structured the inside because, you know, structuring the outside is great, but we wanted to structure the inside. So if you look again, you'll see the administrative support offices here and then this is where you have the living units, but you also have the step backs. So it affects your line of sight and the further up you go, the less ability you have to even look down. Like it just increases your level of privacy. Next slide. So, so this is the, in terms of the rezoning request, a very straightforward, very simple rezoning request. It's actually the only zoning, rezoning I've ever done where we're not requesting increase of density. What we're simply doing is we're rezoning from R two to R three just to allow the ability to provide a park. The density does not change with the rezoning. We're still stuck at two point six dwelling units per acre. So there's actually no change in density with the rezoning. Next slide, please. So this is what I had mentioned earlier. I don't want to, to hammer in the point, but I, I do want to focus on the landscaping that we're providing. It's, as our staff recommendation shows, we are providing more than the required amount of landscaping, but we really take pride in the buffer that we're providing because we're providing, for instance, on that southeast corner, ten gumbo limbos, three wild tamarind, twelve green buttonwoods. One of my favorites is the apple blossoms on the, on the top because it's very dense, but it's a beautiful flower. And then you have, for instance, and shrubs, we have three hundred and fifty-five Spanish stoppers. As you're seeing these, these bushes and these trees, these are very dense, very beautiful buffer elements that we're providing for the landscape. So as you can see, it's not like you're going to be able to see through it. When the neighbors now look out, instead of a parking lot, now they can see this like nice green wall and then above, obviously, the beautiful sky. Next slide, please. So with any development, traffic is always a concern for, for the neighborhood, for the residents around it. Trust me, I totally understand it. But I wanted to address it here and I'll work from the top down. So the health resort is never expected to receive more than seven vehicles entering the property at any one time. So it's a, it's not like a school where you're going to have a hundred cars or, or a, a business where working hours are from nine to five and so everyone shows up at the same time. You're only going to have a maximum expected of seven cars coming in. If we go down to the no driveway access to Southwest Ninth Street, that was a, a huge point that we wanted to make because what we try never to do is put traffic on a residential street. So in this case, we have no driveway that connects to Southwest Ninth Street where there's those residential homes that line it. If we can jump across to this chart, what I did is, we broke up the traffic analysis and it shows you the total of trips entering and exiting, exiting the facility in the morning is fourteen and for the afternoon, that's twenty-eight. And so what that is, is in the morning during rush hour, we're expecting no more than fourteen vehicles coming in and out of the property. So we expect that there'll be about eight vehicles coming in in total during rush hour and six vehicles exiting the property for the total fourteen. And the, and the same goes except it doubles for the PM peak hours. So in the afternoon, we expect fourteen vehicles coming into the property during those hours and fourteen vehicles leaving the property during those hours. And that's a very small number. Obviously, you've seen other developments. It, it's, it's because of the way the, the facility is, the project, what it is, is you have a lot of senior demographic who are retired. They don't have to get to work at a certain time during the rush hour. They actually avoid it and our workers don't have to come in at that same time. There's two shifts. So it makes it really easy when it comes to traffic. We lowered the numbers. Now, if we come down to the de minimis impact section, a de minimis impact is a term of art used by traffic engineers when you have less than one percent of an impact on a level of surface of a road. So what they did in this case is they analyzed Southwest Eight Street and they analyzed Silvania Boulevard. And what that came out to is that we have a point two-five percent impact of a level of service on Eight Street. That is, when you have a de minimis impact, it's almost like you wouldn't even realize that the project is impacting that service if you're driving up and down that street. Silvania Boulevard is a featherweight over half of one percent level of service of impact. So it, these numbers are, are very small. If we go down to the driveway trip distribution analysis, what we did is, we wanted to figure out, in the traffic report, the traffic engineer put the numbers together to figure out which way are people going to be exiting the property, what driveways? And the numbers came out to show that on Southwest Eight Street, you have eighty-three percent exiting through the driveway, entering and exiting through the driveway of Southwest Eight Street. So most of the incoming traffic and exiting traffic will be going back to Southwest Eight Street, which is great because it keeps away from the residential area. We showed that seventeen percent of the entering and exiting traffic during these, these peak hours would be exiting and entering from Silvania Boulevard. And to give you an idea of what seventeen percent is, that's about four point seven six, which is about five cars entering and exiting. It's the combined number. So it's a very small amount and again, this keeps traffic away from Silvania Boulevard. We also analyzed how many of those vehicles are we expecting to go south on Silvania Boulevard because we, we've had some concerns that we don't want to add to Silvania Boulevard's traffic. So the traffic engineer provided a statement and this has all been reviewed by your, your city staff and your city, your city consultants and it shows that one vehicle per hour during that, those rush hours are expected to make a south turn, southbound turn down Silvania. Next slide, please. This is just a further highlight that your staff has reviewed it, your, your traffic engineers have reviewed these applications and they have no objections to it. Next slide. So, like Mr. Penn I said, I like to give the overview as well of the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. I think it's very important to give you a comprehensive idea of, of what the board members were thinking as well as the neighbors. So for the first two applications, I, without all the rezoning, we already discussed, but for the special, special use permit, both of them were given a unanimous approval, recommendation of approval by your Planning and Zoning Board. They had certain questions regarding operation of the facility, design characteristics that we answered, but they all provided that were present, unanimous recommendation for approval. However, we also had, as Mr. Penn I mentioned, a variance request that we had submitted to the, to the board and they approved. And that was just simply on the garage, you have a certain section where it turns upwards and it becomes a, it's pretty narrow. What we did is, we needed that, that ten-foot reduction, but we did, we covered it in landscaping. So you would not realize that the ten-foot reduction was even there. There's a portion of the, smallest portion of the garage. Now, we, we did have two neighbors speak at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. The biggest concern, it seemed, was still traffic. One of the speakers, one of the neighbors is actually here, we, he, he's, he's been a pleasure to work with, Mr. Chavez. He had some architectural questions. He wanted to see, for instance, the water feature for the design. He also wanted to look at the landscaping for Silvania Boulevard because he's correct, it's a beautiful street. And we actually met with him at the Architect's Office and we went through the plans, but he did bring up a point that his concern was, again, traffic on Silvania. He didn't want to add any traffic to the cars leaving the, the project, taking Silvania and going south. So at the Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board meeting, we had discussed and I told him, "Look, I don't, I don't have a problem if the traffic engineer signs off saying, you know, what, we'll just make it an entrance only and, and just go from there." The traffic engineer provided a, a letter which we submitted to the city saying he doesn't recommend making an entrance only. And the reason, because the lock configuration, when you come in, if someone needs, if someone misses the sign, right, to say, "Don't make an exit on Silvania Boulevard," but they miss it, there's going to be an issue because there's no turnaround point and there's like a, basically a blind spot when you make that turn. So you don't want to have a head-on collision when someone's making a turn or a T-bone effect. So we actually met with, well, we spoke to Mr. Chavez this morning and we discussed an alternative. And the alternative that we both agreed to was, in the parking garage, which is where majority of the vehicles are going to be, on the way out, we'll have signage. On top of the garage, I don't know where we're going to place it, but right when you leave the garage, it'll be signage that says, "No, only exit Southwest Eight Street." We got to work on the signage, the terminology with the city, but that's what we discussed. But we also wanted to have additional signage because when you make that right out of the garage, if they didn't see the sign, we want to have a no-exit for Silvania Boulevard so that it causes them to then make that roundabout and go back to Southwest Eight Street. So that eighty-three percent that I was discussing earlier, that, of the entering and exiting, should probably go up because of the signage that we're proposing. Obviously, it's subject to the city approval. The, what that's going to do is, it's still going to allow Silvania Boulevard to be an entrance and exit as it normally would, but it would basically be for the vehicles that are in that small parking lot there. And so you can still enter, but you just can't exit Silvania. So that was our compromise and, and he seems to think it was fair and so we're going to recommend that as a condition that we'll adhere to. Next slide. This concludes my presentation tonight. I thank you for your time and consideration. The whole team is here to answer any questions you may have. I'm here to answer any questions you have. I would like to reserve some time for rebuttal if necessary, but again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. If anyone has any questions, I, go ahead, I'll go up here.
Can you point out the, the setback? Why?
For the variance?
Yeah, for the variance.
Okay.
Where exactly that is at?
Can you go the other direction? Hugo?
You want me to go past you?
Yeah. One more? Right there. So this request isn't before your night, but I, but I, I'll, I want to, I'll explain it. So I had this ready. This is what I showed at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. The, the reason for the request is this gap here is why we need the ten-foot reduction. And what we said is, to the Planning and Zoning Board, "Look, we understand what we're requesting is something that the code, i- it's a variance."
So it's towards the east that you?
Yes, it's towards the east. It's, it's where this purple line is. That is the variance area. And so we, we told them, "Look, we understand that what we're asking for is, is more than what the code would allow." So what we did is, we enhanced that area full of dense landscaping because right now, I drove the area as, I, I drive the area. Every time I, I do a hearing, I like to drive the property to see it. And right now, you don't have any landscaping. You have some landscaping here, but it's, it's basically see-through and some sections don't have landscaping at all. So those neighbors are essentially looking into an empty parking lot. So we, what we said is, we'll enhance the landscaping for this area so it's so dense that it's basically a, a green wall effect. And what we're also doing is, we have an eight-foot wall here that we're also proposing that's going to run around the property. So that, that's going to have, you're going to have your eight-foot wall and then you have this beautiful landscaping that we are also going to be maintaining as part of the project. So they don't have to worry about the maintenance of that as well.
What's going to be on the outside of the wall? It's just?
It's just the wall. This is the wall. So this is going to go way above the wall. So at the time of planting, sometimes it comes up as a concern.
Is it just going to be a wall or is it going to have lighting fixtures on it?
So, so we haven't submitted a, a lighting plant yet, but, but the, we'll work with the city in terms of the landscape lighting, but the way it's going to work is, you'll have the wall and then you're going to have the land, the, the trees going above it. So at the time of planting, these trees are going to be fourteen feet. They have to be, according to the, the planting plan. So there'll be about six feet more than the actual wall. They're expected to grow to a full two stories, most of them. So what they're going to look at is, yeah, they're going to have their wall, but that's going to give them the privacy and, and we haven't had any complaints about it, but it'll give them that green, that green wall effect as well.
You've mentioned that you had not gone into the lighting phase of it?
Yeah, so, so at this time, we don't submit lighting. That's further on, after, if this is approved, then we go into the next phase of the lighting, the drainage, the, the irrigation, and that all gets approved by your city.
Yeah, because you know, a, a plain wall will have a, a sort of institutional type, you know, stark look to it and I, I think that, you know, maybe hopefully some ornamentation on the wall and hopefully some lighting every few feet will give it more of a, you know, neighborly, domestic.
Yeah.
Neighborhood enhancement to the project.
Yeah, we can definitely put that on the record and, and we'll work, when we go to submit the actual drawings, we'll work with the city to ensure that, that comment's met. We'll enhance the lighting, we'll, we'll do something with the wall, see if there's any aesthetic.
On the outside, on the outside of the wall?
Yeah.
Maybe have like some, every, every few feet, some kind of ornament.
Yeah, to break up the institutional feel of just a white wall or?
And then on the top, lighting.
Okay.
You know, some kind of?
So, so in, in lighting, we'll, we'll work on it. We just, we're not allowed by code to spill over lighting into the neighbors because we don't want to affect what, what they want in their own property, but we can definitely do the lighting.
It could be a light that just shoots down and that would enhance?
Yeah, yeah, as long as we don't spill over in the property, that's fine. We'll figure something out with the Planning and Zone, with the Planning and Zoning Director when we go to submit. It's on the record, so we'll, we'll provide some enhancements.
Okay, remember this. Thanks.
Of course.
Commissioner Suarez, I know you had?
No, I, I, you want to say something? No, I agree with the Commissioner, I want us to put some lights.
Okay.
You know, some, some kind of illumination, not just a wall.
Yeah.
I know the wall is going to be eight, eight feet, so it's, it's tall, but illumination, you know, every, I don't know, the customary, ten feet, ten feet or fifteen or some kind of illumination, so will be very good for the neighbors.
Okay. Yeah, we'll work with the director on figuring out the enhancements and the way to break up the wall so it's not that institutional feel with the lighting and we'll, we'll do something with the aesthetics.
Now, I have another question. Your name, sir?
James Williams. James.
James?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I want to congratulate you because you study and remember and did very good your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. It's my first presentation before the city commission, so I appreciate that very much.
All right, I have some questions and some good things, concerns, I'll just go through all of it. When I look at a project, I like to look at a few different things, a lot of which you've touched upon and are good. Traffic, I think you guys have done a good job in trying to contain the traffic, especially in the residential side. Landscaping, mainly the project is self-contained, which I think this project isn't going to have the same issues as other projects that have come for the city where there's spill over parking. In fact, I think frankly, this project might have less of a spill-over effect than the current structure that's there now because when there's big events, people end up parking throughout the neighborhood. The only concern I have with the project, frankly, because I think it's an excellent project for the city, is the height. And, you know, I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done about the amount of stories at its tallest point. Because, you know, in general, the field of neighborhood, I think lends itself to a shorter, not eight-story buildings that we've had come for the commission so far on the commercial side. So I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done about the height of the building, maybe taken the back. I mean, the units, it doesn't really concern me. Obviously, it's within our code and everything, but the amount of units doesn't concern me. It's just the height. Is there anything that can be done on that?
One second. So like my colleague has just told me as well, the first three floors, the first two floors are all administrative, they're part of the lobby, the services. The rest are the livable units. Due to the lot configuration, as you've seen, it's basically a corner. We wouldn't, the way we've set up the building is with the privacy aspects. I discussed the angle, the actual setbacks, the enhanced landscaping. If we were to push the building possibly over to the garage area, what's going to happen is now we're going to be intruding into, the actual activity is going to start intruding near the residential neighborhood. I don't know if we can work with reducing the height because at the same time, the way the density is, I think we would lose a lot of units. And already as it is, we already have the least amount of units possible on the property to actually make this project feasible financially. We've looked at it, but that's why we spent so much time on the design of the privacy aspect for the residential neighbors. Because if we're to bring it down, then the setbacks would have to disappear, just in order to still set up the density. So it's something we can try to revisit again, but realistically, and that's what I want to be, is very transparent, very realistic. The configuration would be very difficult to achieve while keeping the privacy for the neighbors around the project, especially on Southwest 9th Street. It's a difficult question.
No, I understand. And when I'm, you know, even one floor of a reconfiguration, and I understand on the backside of the park, even if things were moved back a little bit to figure rates for even one floor down, would be a big help. It's not a privacy issue. I think if you've done a good job configuring the building for privacy and taking into concerns, privacy, but it's more of a wall-dense feel that is, that, you know, could become an issue. So if there's, you know, again, I know it's hard to sit there in front of me and think of a redesign.
And it's not like we haven't looked into it. This is something we've looked into, it's just, it realistically comes down to the project the way we designed it already, we've already, at the minimum, you heard the number 157. It's an odd number because we've really tried to reduce it, especially with the setbacks. I would love to tell you we could do a redesign. It would just be very financially unrealistic for us to set up that redesign. But that's why we've spent so much time in configuring the building for that privacy aspect because we want to make this work. We've done everything we can. And in fact, we've been meeting with the neighbors. As, I don't know how many neighbors there are, but I recognize one. And, you know, the neighbors typically will come out in force if they have a problem with the height. This is something that we see time and time again. But with this project, the way we did the setbacks, we really do have some neighborhood support on this. And so I would love to tell you that we could make something work, but we're kind of, we have our hands tied between, it's a balancing act.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate the consideration you put into this project. It's, you know, very impressive.
Thank you.
You did a very good other presentation as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Definitely appreciate it, my boss is here hearing that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This item, Mr. Attorney, has recommendation approval from the planning and zoning board?
That is correct, sir.
And, okay.
Recommendations and conditions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Absolutely.
On the zoning change, just to make sure everybody understands, right now, that lot is Zone R2, even though there's a single-family house on it. By changing it to R3, the only thing that could be placed on there in the future if the development never took place would be a duplex at most. Because the zoning doesn't allow a density upgrade.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so we go ahead.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
James?
Yes.
Can you again expand on who is exactly going to be living there?
So we don't have a specific operator yet because we're still in the preliminary.
Operator, what do you mean by operator?
So someone who's going to be running the actual extended care facility, the day-to-day management. So the ones are going to be dealing with the patients every day. This is because we're still in the very preliminary stages of can we even get this? Is this something that the city would approve of? Once we have that, we'll have an operator. And they usually have more of the guidelines of what they're going to, of who they're going to accept. But I can tell you that this is not going to be a fifty-five-year and older-only type of facility. And the reason for that is, you know, we're having a housing crisis in South Florida, as you know. A lot of the older residents are trying to downsize and this is a need that's.
So what you're saying is that there's going to be younger people there, under fifty-five?
But if younger people, in terms of it could be fifty, it could be forty-five, but this is really gauged towards senior, but they have to have the need for help throughout their day-to-day tasks or they're dealing with like some long-term physical rehabilitation where they need that keeping.
Is this going to be related to just physical rehabilitation?
No, no, this is extended care, so.
So what I'm getting at is psychiatry, mental rehabilitation?
No, no, no. This is not, this is not for the, this is not going to be a rehab facility for drugs. It's not going to be a mental institution of that nature of what you're thinking of. This is going to be for.
So it's going to be physical, physical rehabilitation?
So that aspect.
So we're not going to have any mental patients that are going to be rehabilitated there?
No, so it's not going to be like a psychiatry ward or anything like that?
You know, I mean, I'm not alluding to that, but my question and my concern is that are you going to be accepting patients that are younger than fifty-five, forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, that might have, you know, a mental issue? And does this, is this facility going to render care to these type of patients?
So if it's just the mental aspect, no, but if they have like the physical aspect of requiring the service, then yes, but it's not for the mental disabilities that I believe you're thinking of. This is for like, if you think of the palace, this is more gauged towards something like the palace they have in the Gables. It's for the senior demographic that need the.
I'll be very clear with you. My concern is that I don't want to see any younger, you know, customers, you know, of this facility, loitering about our city, walking around our city aimlessly.
Oh, no, you're not going to have that.
You know, if you do have mental people, you know, patients that you're going to be taking care of there, that is a good possibility.
So.
And that's going to, you know, take away from the quality of life of the, you know, surrounding neighbors, you know, having this kind of issue. So maybe we need to revisit the operator parameters, you know, on the type of patient that the operator is going to take care of?
So it won't be, it won't be younger with just mental disabilities or anything like that. What it would be is the older people, so say they have the physical, the restraints, but they might have dementia, Alzheimer's. That might, that will probably be accepted, but with those, you're going to have increased supervision. They just can't have access in and out. We're going to have people stationed at the doors. There is further security.
My concern is the younger people.
Yeah, that's not going to be the case.
You say there's going to be people under, you know, fifty-five, forty-five, thirty-five, thirty, twenty-five.
Yeah, but those are going to be the physical.
They're going to be mobile, you know, they're going to be walking around and they're going to, they might not want to be there all day, you know, they're going to want to walk about.
No, no, so for the younger, the younger population that would be there, it would only be physical. We're not turning this into a, and I hate to use the terminology because I'm not sure if it's, like more of the mental ward situation for young. This is if, if your grandmother or someone also has physical limitations, but they have dementia, then yes. But you're not going to have younger people with those, especially non, it's going to be nonviolent, if anything, for the older as well. You're not going to have those mental issues where you're going to have young people walking around, like you said, that actually could damage the city in a sense. You're not going to have those disabilities.
Well, I would want, I don't know how we're going to do this, Mr. Attorney. You mentioned that you don't know who is going to operate this, so you don't know, you know.
But we, yeah, we can agree.
If I may be heard?
I think that, you know, this needs to be, you know, revisited and studied and I think maybe, I don't know, if it's up to us or the planning and zoning to make sure that this kind of thing does not happen.
Mr. Vice Mayor can interrupt you. Mr. Attorney, what did you have to say?
Yes, the purpose of this hearing is zoning. If we have, are going to have an operation, it would have to come back to the.
So, yeah, so that's why I'm asking.
Right.
Maybe we're just spinning our wheels here.
Yeah.
But that is a big concern of mine.
Okay, no, no, and that's something that we can always.
If I may, again, as I say, the purpose of the hearing is zoning. And if they have to operate something in the future, it would have to come back after the building is built and present to the commission or to present to the planning and zoning board any operation that they might have in order to obtain a license to operate whatever. In other words, there is no danger at this point for you to approve or disapprove. If you approve, there's no danger that something is going to be hidden because there's no, nothing that would indicate at this point the issue. And again, whenever the operation commences, after the building is built, it would have to come out and solicit from planning and zoning a specific license to operate. So there's no operation at this point that is necessary. And I fully understand.
Well, I mean, you know, I'm thinking ahead, but nonetheless, I'd advise your firm, Holland and Knight, that this is a big concern. And if they do make a presentation, you know, about the operations of it, we're not going to take this very lightly.
No, a hundred percent.
We don't want to have this issue in the city.
And at that time, we'll have the operator listed and we will fully vet the operator and you'll have the opportunity to vet the operator at that time as well.
Okay.
All right, does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If this issue is approved, may be subject to the license they will have. If they have a license for their mental sickness and those problems, we will not accept that kind of.
Well, the attorney is suggesting that you will have the opportunity to set those restrictions at a later time. Is that correct about that?
Yes, sir. As I say, the building had nothing to do with the operation. The operation will come later. And if it so happens that is against the code of the city of West Miami, it would be denied or rescinded or corrected or amended.
Which we a hundred percent agree with.
Is there any other questions on the zoning on this application? Is there any other questions on the zoning in this application? Is there a motion one way or the other? Oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. The public hearing is open currently. Is there anyone else with a public hearing on this item?
Well, did somebody make a motion?
No, not yet.
No.
Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Now, is there a motion either way on this item?
We need to read the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, read the resolution.
Okay, item 11A, a resolution of the city of West Miami City Commission, Florida for, okay, of the city of West Miami City Commission, city of West Miami, Florida, for decide plan approval or special use permit for plan development 2021-005 for Renaissance Ballrooms, Renaissance Health Resort, West Miami 5920, Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. Requirements for development of certain lands in the city of West Miami and requiring complete development of all land and in lieu of draft, requiring certain improvements, dedications and other terms and conditions, subject to approval of traffic concurrency by the appropriate state governmental agencies, approval by Miami-Dade County and any other regulatory agency, provided for an effective date.
Okay, now is there, now is there a motion one way or the other? It's a motion by Commissioner Blanca.
I'd like to make in a friendly motion to Commissioner. Do you accept my friendly motion?
What is the?
But I'd like to do something friendly to that because I like to add that we approve this. If I second, we'll be subject to the operation, what kind of operation they are going to.
So now let's go over this, I want to make sure that the vote is very clear. Mr. Attorney, you're saying that the zoning, just to clarify for the table, the zoning has nothing to do with the operation?
That is correct, sir.
And they cannot be tied together?
Whenever there's an operation application that is submitted to the planning and zoning board, it would be approved or disapproved with conditions. And then at that time, you can set out whatever conditions for the operation that you can have.
So there will be, there will be a time.
I second with that friendly.
I have a motion and a second.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
No.
Three-one, item passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
I want to clarify, my vote was not a stab at the project, I think the project will be good for the city. I think that, like I mentioned, it was strictly on the high concerns. And I look forward to you, your applicant, and you guys being involved in the next step in getting this building together and, and success. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, item.
Thank you, guys.
11F, request for mitigation of liens for code violations at 6357 Southwest 13th Street, West Miami, Florida, and owner Carmen Pujol.
How are you?
Good evening yourself.
If you can state your name and address the record.
Carmen Pujol, 6357 Southwest 13th Street, West Miami. I'm presenting my request to cancel, clear this lien. So I satisfied the request that it had to be, the electrical panel that was installed was finally changed. I did fix it and he gave me a completion, a certificate of completion, but I don't understand why you guys still applied the lien. I mean, I understand you applied the lien, you processed the lien, but.
Can we stop for a second? Mr. Penna, can you explain what it is that we're dealing with here? Typically, we don't have the property owner start speaking first, right? I don't know what she's talking about.
Yes, sorry, let's get the explanation so that we're aware of, so that you can continue.
And how much the fine is and what it was for and all that stuff.
Correct. This property was initially cited back in sixteenth of November, 2015, for work without a permit. The work consisted of the area of the electrical panels being replaced, part of the garage was being enclosed, and they were cited. During that time, we had several hearings before the zoning board, I mean, before the code enforcement board, where Ms. Pujol had a chance to ask for time to remedy the situation. Over time, in 2017, actually November 15, 2016, is when she finally applied for her permit to have the electrician replace the electrical panel. It was brought up to code and satisfied on that portion. However, during that time, the property was accumulating a fine to a total of $22,250, which the property was lien for by the code enforcement board.
So she satisfied this in 2017?
Actually. Actually. 2016.
So why did it keep accumulating?
It accumulated until the correction by the building permit. That, she initially got cited in 2015.
Right.
A year later, in 2016, the panel gets replaced.
Right.
So during that time, it's accumulating fine.
Oh, so it was just one year?
Approximately less than a year.
Less than a year.
So the most of the fines come from not paying the fine? Most of the fines that are currently, that were leaned, right, are from not paying the fine?
No, it's not from not paying the fine, it's from not getting the permit.
From not getting the permit.
And the work done before the fine accumulated to this amount.
Quick question. So this happened in 2015, it was corrected in 2017?
That's correct.
And we're in 2022?
It was corrected in 2016.
16.
Seven years later, so why are we dealing with this now?
I understood that.
Please, please talk into the mic, start for the record.
I understood since this was corrected, this lien would be released. I'm in the process of refinancing, this showed up. I would've tried to collect, correct this before. I would definitely would not like the lien on my property for $22,000. And it was not corrected in 2017, it was corrected in 2016. It was corrected a year later.
Okay, so it's corrected and it was inspected?
Yes.
It was inspected, right.
Yes. So, so why did it keep?
I don't know.
Again.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking him.
I don't know what happens, but we sent these notices, certified mail, to the home and to the property appraiser's office. What happened in that time lapse, I can't tell you.
My understanding is that once I received this form, that I have satisfied, this would've been canceled and eliminated.
So how much, I'm sorry if I interrupt you, how much, how much did you pay the city when you, after that year?
The city? Well, I paid for the permits, $430,000, $430. And, I mean, I don't recall what other fees I paid.
Actually, the permit fee was $130, $300 was the bond that she got returned.
Right.
Right, okay, that gets returned to the, to the electrical company.
My manager, how much would you say we were spending postage and time administering this file?
Right, and we have a calculation, but if I may, with the permission of the mayor, ask Mr. Penna a question that would be germane to this.
Please go ahead.
To this violation. Mr. Penna, did, did the applicant or the property owner pay the fine for starting the work without a permit, or not?
I don't have that in front of me. That could be, I don't know.
I don't have, I mean, I don't have records.
And it's been a while, too, so. I would say, Vice Mayor Vlantis, in answer to your question is, I believe that $2,500 would cure at least the administrative time spent on the file. And I don't know if the, if the applicant paid the fine for starting the work without a permit.
May I ask what the fine fee is?
The fine is $500, $350, I'm sorry.
Okay, and may I ask for a detail of the $2,500?
The $2,500 is basically the time spent on the file, the clerk's time, the code enforcement.
And how do we know that time?
Well, we, we have a general idea of how much time, over the years, we spent on the file, the notices.
I find it excessive?
Please, one at a time, please, continue and then.
And, and well, basically, we try to recoup. I mean, code enforcement is a compliance tool. If we were to, to recommend what the fine has accumulated, it would be unfair to you. But the city has spent an inordinate amount of time with Mr. Penna's time, our code enforcement officer, our lien, our code enforcement clerk, the postage, the notices, the filing of the notice to the clerk of the court, all that takes time and there is a cost.
And you would, and you're telling me that that amounts to $2,500?
That probably is an approximate amount.
Can we get a detail of that, sir?
No, we can't.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Please, thank you for addressing me. The, this, this violation was an electrical, electrical panel? Did it cause, forgive me, I'm not a contractor, did it cause any blight or inconvenience to the neighbors, or is it strictly just a building?
It's a dangerous condition for the property.
Dangerous condition for the property.
Correct. May I be heard, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, please.
See, the purpose of fines is not only to recoup cost and time, et cetera. It's a fine. It's something that is assessed against a non-compliance, like the Vice Mayor stated. It isn't the fact that we spent so much, so many minutes or phone calls or anything like that. In addition to that, there's a mitigation procedure that comes out to you to mitigate a fine that was caused by a non-compliance. Since it was a non-compliance, there's a fine. Apparently, the lady was unaware that a lien had placed on her property. And usually, that happens. And it takes out perhaps a refinancing or something for a title insurance to say you have a lien in the property. But many times, but that is the responsibility of the owner.
Right, I understand, and code enforcement is also not, the lines that these are not supposed to be. Are not supposed to be punitive either, so we have to make that balance. Please, I don't have something to say, go ahead.
Ms. Pujol, do you live there? This is your home?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, you've been living there for a long time?
Yes, for almost 20 years.
Okay. You know, it seems like, you know, there was a misunderstanding and, you know, it could very well happen, it could've happened to me.
Correct.
Could've happened to anybody. You took care of the issue and, and you corrected it. You know, the burden is on us as property owners to make sure that, you know, we have, you know, our property, you know, up to code and that there's no, you know, legal issues involved with it. So, the, the fine is $350, right? So, you know, I, I make a motion, you know, that we lower this fine to Ms. Pujol to $1,350. You know, this way, you know, it'll, you know, help her, you know, with, with the amount originally stated by the city manager. We recoup some of the, you know, of the money that we spent on time on it and, and she pays her, you know, her, her fine for doing the work without a permit.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to be solomonic here.
I, no, I understand the balance trying to strike and I tend to agree. I think obviously you need to have the ability to clear that lien, which it burns a lot of things for you. I know you went to refinancing, so I know it's a burden. I do think $2,500 is a bit steep. I understand what, that you have to estimate. You know, there's an estimated, educated estimate on, on the, on how much employment time and, and physical time it also takes to manage a file. I would agree with the Vice Mayor if he were to make that motion. And I don't know if anyone else on the table has any, anything else to say? Do you have anything to say to that?
I agree and I appreciate that, yes.
Okay, you made the motion and someone would second?
So, so the motion is that Ms. Pujol pays a fine of $1,350 to satisfy that, that fine and to have her, her lien removed.
Okay.
And what is the time period on that? What would the time period be on that?
We usually give.
Please, oh, sorry.
Vice Mayor, not fine, it's a mitigation.
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 I'm sorry.
We usually give property owners a 30 to 45 day window of time to pay for that.
What, what, what a 30 day window?
Forty-five days?
The payment will be done tomorrow.
Okay, so your motion is for $1,350 mitigation with a 30 days to pay, correct?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please call the rule.
Mr. Mayor, we should read the resolution.
What are you getting me on that today?
We haven't read it.
Read it, please.
Okay, item 11G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of $1,350 from Carmen Pujol on code enforcement liens for code violations at the property located at 6357 Southwest 13th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid in 30 days, then the amount owed shall revert to the original lien amount, providing for an effective date. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Vlantis, second by Commissioner Blanca. Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vlantis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item H, good stuff now, all right.
Yes, item H, reports slash recommendation by the Office of the Chief of Police regarding the purchase of three police vehicles with the use of equitable sharing funds by Chief Abila.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I'm sure you have the memo in your package of the conversation and the meeting that I had with the manager. Basically, I have three full-time policemen driving around in police cars that have over 100,000 miles. We were able to collect some money that was due and owed by the federal government into equitable sharing, which is, as you know, funds that we recover from, from major drug cases. So we have some funds now that we can use. And with your permission, we would like to go ahead and purchase three police vehicles. One of the problems that we're having is that there is no police vehicles. There is, we're having problems getting vehicles from, from the dealers. The dealers prefer to sell retail instead of to the government, so they're using the chips that they're able to get to, to put them into regular police vehicles. I was able to locate those only three, actually only two police interceptor vehicles in the entire state of Florida through the sheriff's bid. And, I mean, it's a, it's a one-time shot here, we, we need to get these vehicles. So, with your permission, we'd really appreciate it.
And is it not gonna cost the City of West Miami tax or anything?
No, I know. And, Madam Clerk, could you read the resolution?
Yes, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the cooperative purchase, piggyback of three 2022 police vehicles as described by the memorandum issued by the Chief of Police dated March 24, 2022, for the purchase of two patrol vehicles and one administrative vehicle with equipment for a total cost of $123,415.27, said funds to be paid from equitable sharing account, providing for an effective date.
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vlantis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, item J.
J, yes. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami approving non-proting and independent services contract as better described in attached exhibit A with dietitian Lourdes Martinez, MSR DLD, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is more of a housekeeping resolution than anything else. We realized that we renewed the contract with the nutritionist, but we did not have an accompanying resolution. So we asked our city attorney to prepare a resolution giving recognition to the fact that that contract had been approved at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, and we have to submit that as we are undergoing right now the 2021-2022 review by the Alliance for Aging.
And, by the way, as a matter of explanation, non-proting means for now and for then.
Thank you.
Motion.
She has been doing a great job, so I make a motion.
A motion, Mr. Vlantis, you have a second?
Yep.
A motion by Commissioner Suarez and a, and a second by Vice Mayor Vlantis.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vlantis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Next item?
Yes, item K, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami accepting Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant in the amount of $24,650, as better described in attached exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents accepting funding for said grant. Instructing the city manager and clerk of the City of West Miami to express the city's gratitude for the awarding of the above-captured grant, providing for an effective date.
Good evening again. I'm gonna have my second-in-command go ahead and speak to you about the grant. This is a grant that he worked on diligently and very hard, along with Robert Ruano, to be able to get this for us.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So I prepared a short synopsis in order to explain to you what, where this grant originated from. So over the years, our police department has saved a lot of lives by the use of the Automated External Defibrillators, or AEDs. And that's basically for two reasons. Number one is that the, the police officers are already on the road, so they typically arrive to these life-saving calls before fire rescue. No, no offense to the firemen in the, in the group here. And the, the second reason is because we've always had the state-of-the-art AEDs. So, back in 2014, the police department was awarded $10,000 and we were able to purchase five AEDs, which we currently still have. We have four on patrol and we have one in communications. And the way the officers, the way that we, we handle it is that every squad has one AED assigned. So somebody comes in and they sign it out and then that officer keeps that AED for the remainder of his shift. Well, the problem with that is that if that officer forgets to hand it off in the event that they have, they have a prisoner that they have to go to the jail for, now that leaves the rest of patrol without that particular AED. So, the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation was founded in 2005 during the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina. Firehouse Subs founders Chris Sorensen and Robin Sorensen traveled, which are two brothers, they traveled to Mississippi where they fed first responders as well as survivors. On the way back to Florida, they were kinda tired and exhausted, but they figured that they were gonna continue to do something for the first responders. So they went ahead and they did, they, they created this foundation in order to help first responders and to deliver life-saving equipment. So this year, when the grant came out, they were actually giving out a total of almost $25,000, $24,650 to be exact. So we were able to put the grant together and ask for 17 AEDs. And that's gonna put one AED in every single police car. And that way, we don't have an issue anymore. And there's also been instances where officers have stopped to help people either coming to work or leaving work on their way home. And so, you know, that's a good opportunity for them to save a life, if they have to, by being in the, in the car. So with your permission, we would like to go forward with this grant. And I would like to say that this is not a match grant. This is 100% covered by the foundation, costing the city zero money.
That's fantastic.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second, no comments. Call the rule, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vlantis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is?
L.
L.
L, ratification of the Office of the City Attorney pursuant to City Charter, section 4.06, by Mayor and City Commission.
Can you also read the resolution accompanying it?
Yes, item M, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, approving the ratification of the engagement agreement between Jose Avialobos and the City of West Miami, Florida, for city attorney services, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, providing for an effective date.
Any, any comments?
I'd like to have a comment.
Go ahead.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Suarez has his comments and then we'll build the motions, please go ahead. The floor is yours.
No, well, I, I just want to talk about this. The city attorney has on a special insurance program, insurance coverage that he did by himself, protecting him. And it's a privilege, nobody has that type of insurance. In this moment, if you ratify the city attorney, are you ratifying its insurance? Or the insurance will be discussed, discussed in September, October? when the budget comes and we talk about the insurance for everybody?
May I be heard, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
There was a resolution, I'm sorry, an ordinance dated
twenty twenty oh one.
Twenty twenty oh one, approved by the commission unanimously passed that reached inter alia. The city shall continue providing group health prescription, vision, hospitalization, and coverage to the present city manager and clerk and the city attorney and their dependents. And said coverage shall continue when reappointed on the end of the service. So that's by ordinance.
The professional agreement is in the packet. This ratification is for the professional agreement. The salary is already in, done it in September with the budget. That's unchanged from when we last took the budget as well. So that's the only concern, Commissioner. If anyone wants to make a motion, unless you have any other, if you say, if anyone wants to make a motion?
So this would include everything, you know, the ratification of the attorney and his contract?
And his.
That he currently has.
And his contract, which salary is already, is already set at budget, at budget. That was already set the last time we went to budget.
Yeah. I, you know, the last time we spoke about that, you know, I advocated for the city attorney, you know, to receive an increase in pay. You know, he's probably the lowest-paid city attorney.
No, I.
In all of Dade County, and for that matter, Broward County.
Yeah, and I'll interrupt you there because I know where you're going. If I'm guessing correctly, I don't want this to get away from us. The budget is the budget, and the ratification is the ratification of professional agreement. If you wanted to look at his pay, that would be done at a budget level. I don't think it'd be prudent to start changing the budget, increasing things at this moment.
Agreed.
So if you have a motion on the professional agreement?
And I made a nice second.
And we have a second, please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
No.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Three one, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
I want to thank the commission for, this is going to be my thirtieth year of service to the city of West Miami.
You're aging.
I'm the aged. I'm the aged city attorney in the whole, the United States of America.
No, I was.
I don't think that any city attorney lasts more than two terms.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Go ahead, next item.
Yes, item N, ratification of the office of the city engineer pursuant to city charter section four point oh six by mayor and city commission.
Well, we're really going to have to think about this one.
Can you read the resolution as well, accompanying it?
Yes. Item O, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida approving the ratification of the engagement agreement between AMI Engineering and the City of West Miami, Florida for city engineering services, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, providing for an effective date.
I would like to say that, you know.
Second.
Wait, hold on, we already know we got a motion and a second, but.
I just want to say something real brief. You know, we're lucky to have a city engineer that knows and understands this city like Frank Alonso does. You know, with his vast experience, you know, working for TY Lin and the many projects that he's accomplished. You know, we're not his big potato, but, you know, I was impressed by the project, the potable water project on the east side of the city. That was accomplished, you know, remarkably, and, you know, everybody is satisfied and happy with it. So I have confidence that we can continue with Frank Alonso as our engineer for phase two or phase B, whatever it is that we're going to call it.
One B.
One B and.
And two.
And two, and the pumps and the new, the new pumps and everything that we've got coming, so.
We got a lot of money coming in, so get ready.
So, so we're, you know, we're lucky to have him understanding the city as well as he does, so that's.
I agree, we have an excellent, excellent engineer. Please come up.
Haven't been ratified yet, so it was just.
Oh, you're keeping it quiet until then? Okay, let's let those anxiety go down. Do we have a motion? And you have a second? I have a motion and a second, please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Now you can insult us all, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much. As always, I'm very humbled by the trust you guys put into me. Although I'm not at thirty years, actually this fall will be twenty years of my career, and literally the first projects that I worked on were for the city of West Miami, so.
So he has been ratified by ten commissions of the city of West Miami.
So. Oh, yeah. Old enough now that we're looking at rehabbing stuff that I designed twenty years ago, so yes, it feels old. But again, thank you guys for the trust you put into me, and I will not disappoint you and continue to serve the city to my best.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Next item, please.
Yes, item P, discussion in reference to a commission vacancy by mayor and city commission.
Okay, so obviously my seat is still vacant, as we see next to Vice Mayor Blanes there, and we have to take that up. I would propose that we set a special meeting date to go with either an appointment or a special election at that point. I would recommend an appointment, as we've had a long history of doing in the city, including for myself. So if it's all well, I would actually like to set a special meeting date now for an appointment to give time to the commission to interview candidates, come up with, you know, come up with which candidates they would like to see appointed and take up at that meeting. So can we schedule something right now? Let's see, what would work, schedule some time?
Would you, how much time do you need to interview your potential candidates?
Let's shift the table.
Normally, he feel the two years, and in two years, he will have to run for election.
Right.
Right, no, no, I mean. No, no, I'm talking about time for.
So what we're doing now is we're setting.
For a commission meeting.
Yeah, we're setting a special commission meeting for, to see who we appoint.
Oh.
So what, so we're trying to find how much time do we need to interview candidates to see before we make that appointment?
So this will be a special meeting, right?
A special meeting.
Two weeks?
Two weeks, I think is, I think is a good, a good amount of time.
Two weeks, we have a regular commission meeting?
On May fourth?
Yeah, but I don't want to take it as a regular commission meeting.
Right, so Wednesday, the twenty-seventh is next Wednesday.
It's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I would strongly suggest that you do it as soon as possible.
I know we have items that are, okay, let's do it next Wednesday, everyone, please get out there.
I agree, but we need that.
At what time, Mr. Mayor?
I think we keep it consistent, seven-thirty? Seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty.
Does that work for you?
That works for us. If you want to have a daytime meeting as well for a special meeting?
I'm asking the Vice Mayor.
Oh.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, any, any time. We can do, we can do it.
Seven-thirty, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
We'll have a special meeting, we'll hopefully be able to make an appointment at that time. And, okay, so can we do a roll call on that, to set that meeting? Or everyone say aye?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, before the meeting ends, I wanted to see if you could allow us to add one item to that agenda, which should be a consent item. This month is the dispatcher's month, and I don't want the month of April to pass without you all being able to recognize your dispatchers.
Send me an email on that, absolutely, if we can include it on the agenda under a consent item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item, consent agenda, please.
Yes, consent agenda items, you have one item before you for the consent agenda.
And we usually take this as an everyone in favor, right?
Yes, usually the consent agenda doesn't require a discussion.
Yep, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good of the order. I do have something for good of the order, it's just a procedural thing. Not that I have any problem with you putting this item on the agenda, I think it's a great item. But going forward, I do want to formalize the agendas. Items that go onto the agenda, I would like to be either sponsored by a commissioner or through the city manager only, just as a way to make sure that we are getting, you know, we don't ever get tangled up. This is not a criticism to, I'm not saying it because I saw the city clerk.
It's okay, I can send it to you.
I was, I was going to bring this.
Sponsor to you.
Yeah, I was going to bring this up regardless, before this agenda, even saw this agenda. So I do want to formalize that going forward through the city manager or sponsored through a commissioner. And again, I would, I would like to get away from this sponsor by a mayor or city commission. If there's a clear sponsor, state that sponsor, otherwise it's through the manager. It's just an easier way to know where things are coming from.
All right.
With that said, anyone else, anything for the good of the order?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
We're honored to have a member of the judiciary.
You are right, you are right, and I almost forgot.
I think that one of the very, very merits of a judge would be patience. And I think that the judge have been more than patient hearing all of us tonight. And I commend the judge, of course, and we all admire and see how he has developed himself in the bench, so.
I don't usually agree with you, Mr. Attorney, but I will say, I know Judge Scott Janowitz pretty well now and his family. They're excellent, I'm going to expose something here, he's a resident of West Miami. In fact, we have a recognition pending for him that we haven't yet submitted, I think that's my fault. But we will be giving you some wallpaper for your office. He's a great resident and a great judge, I was honored to be his investigator. And we're glad to have you here, we're glad to have you in the city. Thank you.
Would you like to hear from him? Would you like to?
Would you like to come up?
Yes.
Judges love to talk, no?
Actually, no, attorneys like to talk because they can bill.
You're an elevator attorney.
Judges like to listen and rule. But thank you, and I'll keep this brief because it's already past nine o'clock. First of all, thank you very much for your service and allowing me the opportunity to speak. And thank you, Madam Former Mayor as well, for everything. Quite frankly, I moved here actually in two thousand and fourteen, actually I got married, and then my wife and I, I moved here. And this wasn't an area that I actually knew a lot about. Quite frankly, my city manager reminded me when I talked to her a little while ago, a couple of months ago, that she believes she helped move me in when I came in and came to the clerk's office to do some of the paperwork and everyone has been very, so helpful. But obviously, as an attorney, I would just become a disgruntled resident. I actually became, and I was appointed judge in April two thousand and twenty, so pandemic had already started, so everything was already virtual. So this is something I would have liked to have done previously, but given the circumstances for the last two years, I haven't been able to. I'm very proud and we are very happy residents here. I now have three wonderful kids. My wife has gotten involved, she is a stay-at-home mother at this point, once the third child came. But she's working with Mr. Mayor, hopefully regarding some landscaping and beautification of the city. Because during the pandemic, she has learned a great deal about gardening, as well as about native trees and shrubbery and plants and what's actually useful and good for the environment, as well as good for communities. So actually, when I saw the plans regarding the facility and the variance, as I was actually looking at the shrubbery and showing my wife what the, what the plans are going to be. But we're very thankful here, like you said, I am a county court judge, I was appointed by Governor DeSantis two years ago. I sit in the Coral Gables branch, which is, and I'm in county civil. I'm actually already a administrative, one of the associate administrative heads, which means I'm among the county civil leadership team, so kind of like a little mini-boss in a way. But I'm very honored to be here, I'm very happy. If there's anything I can ever do, please, I definitely love the work, we are working on various things. Luckily, a lot of the problems that other cities and other municipalities have, we don't have here in West Miami as much. For instance, I don't see, since I see all the evictions that are in these zip codes, I don't see a lot out of West Miami outside of maybe some of the, a couple of the new commercial projects, but in terms of residences and things like that. Though I did help put together an eviction portal for the county. But I'm very glad to be here, I'm very honored to be here, thank you so much, and spoiled surprise, but, but thank you, and I'm very proud to see everyone here. And the nice thing about it is, is we do honor, I know we have commissioners and city attorneys and people here who have been here for a long time. And the nice thing about this community, one of the things that drew me to this is my potential name, at the time when I was looking at the house I bought, and hopefully it's okay that I'm not putting my address on the record, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, at the time I bought, the neighbor across the street kindly jokingly said, "Don't buy there." And we did, we've become very good friends with her, and her, she is a second-generation member of the community back from when the city was even founded. And so one of the beautiful things I love about this city, besides its size and everything else, because I give major credit to the police officers and all the other services here, because I once had an alarm go off and my, the police were there before my alarm company had even called me. So I'm very appreciative of that, is that people like to be here, and people like to raise their families here. And then, once you've been raised here, you want to stay here, and we hope to encourage my, I've got twins that are six years old and I have a three-year-old, so hopefully, when the day comes, they will love to actually stay here. So I'm very honored to be here, thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be representing this community. I'm very proud when I say, you know, I'm a resident of the city of West Miami. And everyone else says, "Oh, that's a great place," everyone always compliments the city, and so that's a testament to all the leadership and everyone else who provides services here, so thank you very much. I'll probably be back at a future hearing as well, I did want to support Mr. Mayor in his first meeting as well. But for public comment more about it, because I am actually up for reelection as part of the appointment process. So unfortunately, I have drawn opposition, and so my election will also be on August twenty-third, which is a hundred and twenty-seven days, but who's counting? And, but I'll be making those rounds as well. But thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you for allowing me to speak in a few moments.
But it was an honor, it was an honor for us, you watching all the commission, you see how peaceful we work?
Yes.
And we appreciate very much, you was very relaxed. I was watching you, you was relaxed, so that's very good, thank you very much. You're welcome to come here every, every, every two weeks.
Let me just also say something. Commissioner Suarez is the life of the party at the Miami Day League of Cities. And, and, you know, and you never thought such a small, small city municipality would have such a big impact everywhere. But I went around and everyone, anytime I say West Miami, I always hear Commissioner Suarez, you know. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, I mean, I won't disclose where he lives, but his neighborhood is very tight and they are very active in their neighborhood and the city, and they're great residents. Thank you. And with that, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
It's me adjourned, thank you.